All right. Well, I'm in front of you, pretty much created this little list of parcels that were kind of classified as residential. If you guys is interested in the subdivision. Kind of all the different areas out of the mapping plan. Sweet parts of the meeting pack, the action pack, the whole mapping plan in it. Ninety-five page document which had it all and it breaks it down into some colored maps that show you the management authority, the patented lands. And it tells you which parcel we actually wait in. Documents. The work session. Somebody's high priority came out of and the scripturing stuff and the classification came from the the planning effort we did with Agius Beck for like kind of developing a land classification system. That meeting that we had with him and we kind of went through, we had the public meeting for that. And it was just some of the stuff we heard in the few of the areas, what their high priority would be. You know, Healy and kind of making a village are the highest priorities over here, the most from people that they'd like to have somewhere in the by. And Brown's Court was more just high priority for the people in the northern area. For them to see interested, the state sells a lot of land in various areas, like the Quota subdivision. The University of Alaska owns and they've been selling lots up there. They also have some in the Windy Hill subdivision on the south side. Bridge. So it wasn't really a high priority for us because the state has been selling agricultural land in the area. So we haven't really, you know, focused on high priorities because there's other entities selling land in the area. But we're thinking about the kind of Brown's Court was really our only land that was kind of close to the highway. There's a couple parcels that were in the village, the subdivisions and tracts of lands and a few parcels that we had. And then the next ones are actually kind of west of the ability subdivision or east of the ability subdivision. We have some bigger tracts of land. We have like a thirty-one acre parcel there that is that we do have a patent to that we could kind of subdivide, but it's currently got kind of some access. It take a lot to figure out where it took the access to get up there because it's also kind of going up on the Karma Ridge. And then everything that we have passed there for probably about four or five miles is just un-patented land. It's management authority. It's on our next priority to be surveyed.
Can I interject something there?
Go ahead, Steve.
Each one of those towns has been surveyed. The modern, I've located all the one of the money. And know where they are. So why do we need to resurvey those townships to get titles to them?
So the state has not recognized those as being surveyed already? Gave it to us. It wasn't on there to be kind of patented list. So I think if I submit the survey instructions, they do their research and they find out that they've actually already surveyed it. It may come back where we won't have to survey it.
Yeah, I think we need to do that because that's a lot of survey cost out there. And it was originally done by the BLM in the nineteen, early nineteen eighties. And the same surveyor that did it for the BLM went to work for DNR and now is now retired. Because he not only did the original survey here, he came back and resurveyed it for the state when he went to work for the state. So. Anyway, there is a federal USS survey number for all of those townships. Not a state number, but the USS survey number for those townships. Five, five, six, five, 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 whatever it was. I don't remember. I could give you those numbers, but I don't have them in front of me. And that's probably why the state does not recognize them because they were done prior to the state acquiring the land.
Yeah, I don't know. I just know they were, I think, already conveyed to us by the time I came. And the state hadn't recognized them as being, you know, US survey numbered. So maybe when we submit the instructions and that's part of when we submit the survey instructions, they do their research, recover all the monuments that are out there and do research for anything else easements and all that kind of stuff. So they may come back once we submit it.
I will be happy to supply you the original survey so that you could present that to the state so that there is absolutely no reason why we need to resurvey that because there's a USS survey number for all of those townships. Where you could get title to each one of those townships without resurveying. It's a waste of money.
So it could take less time?
Yeah, the thing is, is that process is when they conveyed it to us, they had done some research and they hadn't at that time recognized that as being qualified for their boundary survey. Now, maybe once I submit or ask them about it, they make it happen to be like, oh, these do qualify, they're surveyed. That we won't have to pay for a boundary survey.
It would not be in the ADL numbers, it's in the USS numbers. And that's through the BLM, not through the state.
No, they recognized US survey numbers because there's a couple parcels right next to you that they gave us the patent to because it had a boundary survey. Now these
The same surveyor at the same time did those same surveys. So anyway, I'm just saying that we need to argue that point. We do not need to resurvey those townships because the three inch monuments are sitting out there right now. And I can show you every one of them, but one, I just haven't taken the time to find the last.
So if, if with that information, would that move it up on our priority list?
It's number one on our priority list right now. It was just waiting because even though Steve says the monuments are out there, there's different departments that do different things. And if they don't recognize these as being surveyed, then we have to pay for it and we have so much time. And, you know, with that tract of lands, you know, being as big it is and how far it goes out that we still have to pay for the survey or else we basically have to restart over if we don't do it. So it's kind of been on the, in our priority list is getting ready to because of the amount of money it costs to survey. If it does qualify to be surveyed or else if we need to hire a surveyor.
But if it's not, if it doesn't, is, is there a way to ask for the boundary? I mean, give the boundary instructions and then like hold off if we have to pay for it?
We have two years. Once I submit it, the, the, basically the head or the Northern Region Survey Department, the Land Surveying Department reviews it. And they actually have to send it to the, basically the Northern Region Chief of Surveying. He revises it and then he gives it to us. We have two years to complete the boundary survey. Or else we have to pay for it all over again. Submit it and then they have to do their work and they charge us for it.
They're, they're, they're just not saying those USS survey numbers. Or maybe those surveys are just as valid as any ADL. There's, you know, it's a waste of our money. It's more cost effective to argue the point to make them recognize those USS survey numbers, which are legal surveys. There's no question about it. And they're exactly the land that you want to get typed.
Okay. So do we want to talk about?
And the surveyor is named Dave Potts. P O T T S. He worked for the BLM and then he worked for the state.
Yeah, all right. Okay, so.
And DOT is still using those monuments and they're road construction.
So the land Steve is talking about here is Yanard B? Yes.
So in this state here, it's this whole strip of land that goes out of here.
So.
It's Yanard. It's just Yanard. It's one page before that one. That's what he's talking about.
And this native allotment that shows here was turned so the, the thing that you have is not really you know, it's got a couple exceptions in it. But anyway, that whole thing was surveyed in the around between eighty maybe eighty-three, but it was, Dave, Dave Post was the surveyor that did it. Bonhof was the engineer. He was, Dave Post was the BLM engineer. Bonhof Associates was the engineering company that came out and did it.
So, Marcia, if this was our top priority to survey, I assume there's some funding set aside for that. Or is that sort of already in process to make that happen or?
We were waiting to, I guess, put in the survey instructions until probably spring, submit for them because then it depends on however long it takes the state to get them back to us and we can have funding aside.
Yeah, we, we allocate that funding through assembly ordinance as we go and, you know, we've, we've committed to a number of surveys already from Anderson, Dato Lake, the Heli, Panginean. So, um, you know, that rotation is continuing and we expect that that we would be able to allocate funds for the Yanar when it's time, but it's not allocated us yet.
Because it sure seems, if you don't end up needing the surveys, that seems like you're saving everybody money. That's great news. I wonder if then you just allocate money right away to the next thing that would need to be surveyed or would that jump things ahead a little faster than we want to? More surveys?
Keeping it rolling is the plan.
Yeah, good. Then we just got to pick our second highest priority.
What, what is the monetary risk of of asking for this? And I mean, how much does it cost for us to ask for it and then if we don't do it in the two years?
So our application is like, it's $200 for an application fee for them to start the process. And then they issue us the survey instructions and I don't know if we don't complete it in the two years, if they then make us reapply all over again, which would be another $200. And then they have to do their process over again, I guess, just in case depending on when you submit again, if something got built in the area, they have to do research and take that into account. So like when they did the Pangini area, it took them a lot longer because of all the old historical trails and the utility easements and recognizing private, private property in the area and all that. So that's kind of what they do in their research. And they do bring up and they have to recover where all the monuments are because they're building instructions. So the surveyor knows where he has to go out, which monuments he has to recover. They were put in either by the state or BLM, you know, all those things. So it's just, I guess, their time and effort and it might depend. I don't know. I mean, it's $200 each time we submit it. So it's not much, but the, the risk was is that it, this, since it's a pretty big chunk of property, kind of a long distance out there, wasn't really close to the highway. It could cost a surveyor more money because it costs us about $80,000 just to do right here by Dry Creek, the Healy parcel.
What?
So to do Yanar where you have to go out there for for about five miles. Five miles out there to Ravine Creek and then about a mile, you know, north. It just might take them more effort because they got to put monuments, however the state requires them. Means they got to get equipment out there and whether they have to rent a four wheeler, they want to rent a chopper for to get five miles out there. And what is the, what is the potential of this area? I really, I don't know this area well.
Oh, well, I, let me address that. The, the problem of getting past section thirty-one is terrain. Once you get past section thirty-one, it's pretty much flat all the way to Ravine Creek.
Is it fat and like good?
It's, it's rolling flat. But there's a lot of frozen ground down there. And on those townships or those, those sections that are out there, Bonhof did a soil survey, which I have. That shows where the frozen ground is and where the non-frozen ground is. Because the reason that that was surveyed was the state wanted to do a 6,000 acre subdivision with 1,500 lots on the unfrozen portions of that land.
That's huge.
And we stopped them from doing that and created Village View subdivision as an alternative. I was the chairman of the committee on doing that. So very familiar with that process and what happened. Not only did we stop them, but we also offered them an alternative, village view, the alternative, almost an exact overlay of what we presented. Three lots difference and slightly different road configuration. That's the difference.
So it's kind of impossible to get down off of Village View there, the far eastern end of it?
Okay, right. Okay. If you're looking at section thirty-one and you come around and it makes a kind of a dip down to the section line where it meets Ottenland, then goes back up. And there's a vacant area between a three, three lot thing and a big double row of lots. If you follow the south side of those three lots, you hit dry ground, you come around to where you hit this half section survey line that's in existence. And right where thirty-one is, is a, is a, a lake. Well, like right where up where section thirty is, is a lake. But that section line is already cut and that's all but about three or four hundred feet of it is usable as a road.
So you could just follow the section line to thirty-two and then you've got a road?
So you, okay, no, that's too steep. That's that big hill where the Commo Tower is and that's that little red dot with a white square in it. Okay, so that's, that's it's not possible, but impractical to build a road on that section. Or even any place in that area, that triangle that is formed by the subdivision lots and the red lines, the section lines. It's, it's really difficult terrain for a road to be built in. But if you come at the south edge of the double row of lots and you come around the corner of that to where it says thirty-one, then that red line that goes out to thirty is a quarter section line that's cut already and it's usable as a road. It's, well, the terrain is usable as a road, except for about 300 feet, which would take a, a little deviation to make it. With the snow machines, we go around that with just to avoid that little one, one area. But that's an existing trail that's on that quarter section line. That is the best access into that whole set of, of sections.
Are we talking the southern boundary of thirty-one?
No.
I don't know where.
Okay, you see those three lots that are by themselves?
Yeah.
Okay. And then that road is the red line that goes up to a double row that kind of hooks up way upwards?
Yeah, I think I know what you're talking about.
Okay, you come along the western, southwestern side of that, turn the corner where's the little square thing. And you go over to where the thirty-one is on that, on that drawing?
Right in the center there of the section?
Yeah, the center. Okay, that's fairly dry land. Then you you, from there, the best way to access those sections is to go down that quarter section line towards thirty and then cut off out into those sections that are to the east of, of that line. To come from the southern line is really difficult and to come from the western side of that, it's all a real steep hill. I mean, very steep. It would take a huge cut out in there to make a road and it's unstable land to begin with because there's springs in there.
So you would join up with a Village View Road then?
Well, you would come in on Savoma Lake Road, turn onto Yanard Road and then tell them at the bottom of those sections where Joe Meyer and Dulcey and I can't remember the other guy's name. All of those lots is right at the bottom of that. You come below their lot lines. You turn the corner and go to thirty-one. Once you hit thirty-one, you have access out in the, of that area. That's reasonably flat. It, it, any other way is not going to be very expensive and not easy.
Steve, this is Clay. I'm familiar with that. And, you know, I, I've always kind of wondered whether the state and/or the planners, you, you, your committee left that gap there just for that reason, right? Because that is a natural launch point into that terrain. I also wonder about, I mean, did you?
We, we did, Clay, we did not have anything to do with that gap that came from DNR.
Okay. Okay. And thanks for that. In terms of wetness, as you go down there, it does, there are some places that get a little wet, but it might be a little further down.
Right, right on this, on, just say you take fifty feet below the private property line.
Yeah.
It's per, it's, it's, it's usable. You turn that corner. If you go straight, you end up into a real bog. But if you turn corner, or it's a little square corner and you go straight up to thirty-one, it's reasonably dry.
Thanks for that. That, that, there is some varied terrain in there?
Like I said, I have the Bonhof maps that show where the dry land, usable land is and where the wet frozen land is. I'd be happy to, you know, give you guys copies of that. And a road could be designed from that point out in sections thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, all the way to section thirty-five. But you would have to follow the contours of the eskers and stuff, the Moreno deposits that formed the dry lands, the usable lands as opposed to the wet boggy lands. It would be a squiggly road. It would not be a straight line. And it could branch off into a number of places.
So any feel for how the neighborhood feels about this?
Oh, they're gonna hate it.
Okay.
I'm not so sure that's the best spot.
But it's, it's probably the most valuable land in this area and at least section thirty-one. You know, this area is crying for land to be developed or for residential purposes. And that's the only place that we have that we can go.
Do we have a material site?
You'd have to develop a material site, but with the Bonhof engineering for the soil sampling that they did, it would be easy to identify one or two material sites and also location for lots and roads. And this is the first stuff that was done in the first half of the nineteen eighties.
Where? On, in section thirty-one, kind of like where the road here. Right in kind of the corner where section thirty and thirty-one, kind of that meet on the south side. There's a, there's the state material site that's right there.
Yeah, that's, that's the one they're visiting today.
Larger active site.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's the one that soon to be, they're actually not mining material there. They're wasting material there. There's piles of various material that they piled up like the used asphalt and stuff. And they're filling in the Otten pit, which is on the south corner of that between in section one and two. I think, I can't read the number there. I think it's one and two. Anyway, right, right there. We're up above that where you're saying, right there, right in there, right below where your cursor is right now. Anyway, that is an area that Otten is filling in and they will rehab that site as soon as that area is filled in. Because a couple miles south of there, they have an eighty-eight year gravel pit that's leased by CLI. And that's where they want to get material. They don't want to get, they're not taking any more material out of that on the pit. They're wasting material in there to sell it back up.
So it sounds like we develop our own material site anyway.
So, and that eleven acre DOT pit is available to a nonprofit, like the community club, to turn into a public use facility like a park at some time in the future. When they, when they consider it expired or used. There's a, a state ordinance or state code that allows that to happen. So anyway, where the quarter section line on section thirty-one goes west, that's roughly an area where a road could be built, but it wouldn't be a straight line. It would be all over the place. Because it's full of pothole lakes, little wet areas and eskers and maraines. Because it's full of pothole lakes, little wet areas and escars and maraines. Yeah, going out that way. That's that's where the best access is. Then you get out into section thirty two and you have that horse you lake and places like that.
Well, in our um. Our plan here on page seventy nine splits into sub area one and two and. You know, there's nothing saying right now that we need to go that far in the area too with subdivision plans. Maybe. Maybe a reasonable goal would be an idea of where a road would go and where. Ten lots, I don't know, some number of lots might be good for residential use. I don't have any idea about the uh. I don't imagine the survey gets that much cheaper by not surveying section two, but in terms of our priorities and in terms of uh. You know, there might be some some demand for land down there, but I don't think we have. Quite quite ravine creek levels of demand. I don't know who's gonna.
Yeah.
Maintain that road or.
If you did one, it's only three hundred and seventy nine acres.
Yeah.
This is the two thousand.
To start off with, uh the number one is by far the the best place to start. And my guess is that you would be able to do um something in the neighborhood of about thirty to thirty five lots of that. On good high quality land that was not north facing. And that had, you know, uh good gravel deposits underneath of us.
Are we talking about the all of section one or just the patented section?
Well, it was what's listed there is one, which is section thirty one.
Right. But there's this the smaller square inside of that. It's the patented land.
Okay, that's actually a native allotment of application. And the letter I got from BLM said that was denied.
What does that mean?
It was turned down.
Yeah, the dark green is supposed to be already.
It's supposed to be an native allotment. It's uh. I can't remember his last name, guy from Fairbanks filed on it without ever coming out here. And when the BLM brought him out here, he couldn't find it.
So does that mean?
Means they didn't give it to him. That's the last letter I got from BLM.
Okay.
Killed that, but I don't have anything that shows them.
Okay, so it so that means it's our patented land so that we can work with it.
Well, it means it's let land that we need to question the status of.
And they just.
Uh Clay, the Clay, I think that's the the guy's name that filed on it.
No, we hold the patent to it, so we hold the title to it.
I'm not following what Steve is saying.
Yeah.
The state gave us the title and they're gonna give it to him.
Okay, so. You're talking about the same land though. Okay.
I think I think once you guys get to see the bomb off. Toils into for the for that area and the area west there, I mean east of there. It'll be pretty obvious where you can do. Uh good lots and where you do good lots and where the roads would act going. It's 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 pretty blatantly clear where that is.
Okay.
A-actually, there's still some, there's a few of the white PVC pipe sticking out of the ground out there. From the bomb off soil survey that was done.
Okay, so can we add that to a list of? Things to move forward on and then talk about other areas that are priorities.
Yeah.
So the patented land in Yanar will add that to our. Our list of like things to consider looking forward to. I mean, you know. But because because then we need to talk about, you know, after we figure out what our. Priorities are for moving forward. Then we need to talk about how we're going to talk to the community and say, what do you want? Because we're not going to make these decisions in a vacuum.
Right.
Um, we need to make sure that we're doing what people want. Um, so let's talk about other areas.
I came in in the meeting with that Healy sub area one. That's where we took that walk up those zip line road.
Yeah.
And then there's that. A lot of it towards the back was wet and boggy, but that ridge was really nice looking. And I've had a lot of people ask questions about that. Since that time, wondering, you know, if we're ever gonna move on on that and some divide. That ridge. I understand that, you know, it requires a whole seventy seven hundred and thirty one to be surveyed, but. Concentrating on the rib, uh the ridge to some divided. There was a lot of interest in that. Thank you. We thought there could be, if I remember the conversations up on that ridge was. A bunch of, I say a bunch lately, but of two or three acre lots that you could run across there.
Are you talking like kind of about being named uh the blue church kind of across on the north side?
Yeah, yeah, how it runs from the zip line road towards the blue church on that that ridge there.
Yeah, Eric, that's the one I always have. I admire when I drive by.
If you're talking kind of the ridge, the road that goes to the zip line or the. Nick Evans' old house that's behind.
They're on the south side of Stampede, right? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, because we went up the stand where we went up that zip line trail. I got whatever. Anyways, you know, we got up to there and then we took that. We hung it up. Right and then walked along that ridge there, so. I I would like to see that be a priority too, just based on the number of people asking questions about it.
My concern about that is. Visibility of development. Because would that be visible then? Because I want to avoid fossilification. And keep development contained, like, you know. Not that it, I mean, it's already. Maybe that's within the container, you know, but at least keep that in mind.
I I would think that people building on that ridge would probably want the view, so they're gonna you're gonna end up seeing their house. I would imagine.
Yeah.
If I was up there, I'd want to be a little look back towards. Dora and all the peaks and jumbo and all that, which means.
If the bro doesn't want people on the ridgeline, you would put some kind of buffer to offset them from it, so.
It could still get a view, but not.
You can put like some kind of green space kind of so people can have walk along the ridgeline or something, but you can't quite see the houses.
Yeah.
Um from the highway because it is up on the ridge. But that would be part of the planning effort to figure out if that's what the community doesn't want to see these houses, then you wouldn't put them. Give them the ability to develop on the ridge right there.
Yeah, good point. Maybe other people don't care, I realize. No, yeah, I think that's a really good point. I mean, the. View shed is um. Part of. Yeah, what we like.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I am. I went on the U S Fish and Wildlife Service site to find prospective wetlands in the area. And I I have a couple of maps I can just kind of pass around. It shows these are not permit necessarily wetlands. They're kind of. Just an indication from aerial surveys on what might be there, and those are actually all the lakes, so I only brought a couple. But um, you know, there is there there's that strip of land uh parallels the highway from Dry Creek up towards Stampede. And when I used, you know, basically the crayon drawing method on on what is basically Google Maps. It looked like, you know.
That's all at the bottom of the ridge.
Yeah, but it looked like on the on the top of that ridge line there, you could put a road on one side and you'd have space for. One to three acre lots on the other side without getting too far off the side of the. Off the side of the ridge and into the wet stuff. It'd be a, you know, you're walking on a balance beam, so you've only got one property on one or maybe two sides, but.
So if I if you you could, if you're interested about view shed. You could put the road on the edge of the bluff and the lots behind the road. And that would give the view on a cleared road plus be less visible from the area below it. People wouldn't like that, but you know, that's that's one way of solving some issues.
Problem with the foundation.
Yeah.
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 There's the school too. Yeah, you know, I I didn't find a an actual soil survey. If anybody saw one of that area, then, you know. We should get that shared, but yeah, this was the closest I could find of of some gas.
Good research.
I think the other thing that I was thinking about with with this is um, you know, we're also right next to that. Pangini. On page fifty seven, yeah.
Under the management intent on Pangini, I think it would apply to Healy as well about the idea that. Take into account buffer residential area protection of recreational trails. There's a lot that's all tied in there.
Now, and I guess just a a question I have um. Is there like mechanically, can we engineer a road that goes along that ridge and connects into Stampede? Or is there?
Doesn't it come like if you were to ride. That edge down, I think it gets really, really steep behind the blue church back there, doesn't it?
But there's quite a gravel ridge along and you could run that all the way down almost to the blue church. And then drop off the west side. There's kind of a a low area that just passed the church before you make the first corner.
Yeah.
Because water doesn't flow down through there. It's all pretty gravel. Once you go down rock, once you get a foot foot and a half down through, I'm saying you could drop off there and tie in. Between the church and the corner right in that tree there. I mean, you just have to get it down off the block because. If you're far enough back up there, ways it drops down a couple of sections, you would have to just drop off in one angle. Definitely be out of sight.
Yeah, that would.
I really like that idea of almost as a frontage road. Just not a bunch of driveways off the highway. It's tucked back and.
I think we want to avoid all driveways off the highway or a bunch of driveways on Stampede Road or a bunch of driveways on like that road. I think we need a parcel large enough to have like its own service road to enter the subdivision.
Yeah.
One good advantage about that point would be the fact that you've already got a power line across the highway. So you don't have to put another power line in, go from the power lane and work south versus have a cross. We're going to Dry Creek wherever else.
Can I interrupt just for a second?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Davis is here and he would like to provide a public comment during the regular meeting, but he has to leave for um a chamber meeting.
Oh.
So can we take his public comment now?
Is that okay to to take it during a work session? I mean.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
All right, thank you very much. Chamber meeting. Um, so Kyle Davis, Auto Lake area. Um, I'm the director of operations for Denali TV. And I just wanted to um request reconsideration for something that was approved in, I think it was the August meeting. The minutes aren't online yet, so I'm I'm not sure, but I think we talked about it. It was the August meeting. Um about an access to Dry Creek over in the Auto Lake area. Um, it was approved to close off one of the accesses. And unfortunately, I wasn't available able to attend that meeting, but um. The reason I'm bringing it up now is because it's been an issue this year already um with all the flooding and the drainage um in Dry Creek. The main um access has been pretty much washed away. Um, and the reason why um the company that wants to uh get rid of that second access is not done is because it's the only access right now to that area. And so I'm wondering if there's just a way to reconsider that because um not only can our tours not get out there, Black Diamond's tours have to use that access. Um, anybody who wants to access Dry Creek in the public has to use that second access that was requested to get blocked. Um, and it's on borough land. There's not really a good reason to block it, in my opinion. Every year, there's probably one of the two accesses that have been washed out and so. Um, us and other companies and private individuals use whatever access is safe. And right now, the the current access, the one that's um that we are using and trying to fix all the time is probably not the safest access point. To uh Dry Creek. So I don't know, um, it was already proved and and I understand that uh it's not something that can be changed. I we're fixing the the current access as much as we can by hand and adding rocks and knocking down ledges and uh. But there's a lot of time this year that there has not been access to Dry Creek um without using that second access that was approved to be blocked. Um on Berlin, so. I have no problem answering any questions or showing anybody. I didn't bring any pictures, but uh.
Can we?
Yeah, too.
I need a refresher here.
That was when Black Diamond was requesting the the new public access road, which would intersect that access point and was a safety consideration with.
Which one got blocked or?
The one furthest to the west.
They put it up permit to block it. It has not been currently blocked. They were gonna do it at the end of last year and they did not do it. Um, and it has not been blocked yet because it's been the only access all spring.
So the one on the east is not usable?
Yeah, it's usable right now because we've been fixing it, but it's not. It hasn't been usable for several weeks. On that that area got hit pretty hard with the melt and um cut that road that gets that area and everything like that, so. The drainages have been um really on the south side of Dry Creek have been really taking out a lot of that land and everything. So um it's just one of those things that um I don't really, there's no real reason to block that, I don't feel. Um, I understand that. Black Diamond wanted to put in a one way kind of loop and that was approved on that was public. Um, and that the trail does border private land as well. It's it is the western border of the borough land. Um, but it is still public access and um currently the the best access to directly, the safest access to Dry Creek. So if the summer is dry, it may go back to being, the other one may go back to being just fine, but um. Just something to consider.
Did that loop get built?
It has not yet.
You guys have any questions?
So it was going, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I I remember comments about the uh the concern being ATVs and vehicles. In conflict with the horses, just kind of the two using the same space, kind of scaring people. Um, really horses, I think more than the people get scared, but um. Yeah, this uh. I I mean, I don't know if to take into consideration, I think, all right, so.
The horses in ATVs is really not an issue because Black Diamond operates ATV tours as well next to their horses. And so the horses are fine with that and the whole road is utilized for ATVs and horses, so. This one section pulling it out would not really change anything. You'd have to like regulate the whole road or putting put in a way to pass and. You'd have to like regulate the whole road or putting, put in a, a way to pass and there's, there's not really been any conflict with ATVs and the horse carriages out there with either ours or theirs.
Is that, is that a public road? Is that on borough land or is that a? I mean, there's multiple driveways out there off of that, so.
Why does the borough land end?
With, with Troy and speaking of the main carpet road.
Is that, is that where that is? Yeah, I guess it is. I mean, that, that little section that is affected by having both accesses open is um, I think it is the carpet road, isn't it?
Yeah. It is. It's not a borough maintained road.
So we shut down one access to Dry Creek theoretically to leave the other one, the idea of even saying, you know, making things safer. Whereas the point here now with one washed out, instead of having traffic getting Dry Creek and then the old days, two places, everything's funneling into one. So in this aspect where we're at, we didn't make things safer. We made things unsafe.
Not foreseeing a possible washout.
Correct, yeah. And, and like I said, over the years, we've been here, I've been here for sixteen years and it's a, it's a toss-up which one is safer and which one is washed out at any given point. And with our rains last night, they changed again. So um Dry Creek flows in different ways every single time we have run off of rain, flooding. And so you never know. And that's one of the reasons why it's I mean, both of those access points are just on borough land. They're not official trails or roads or anything like that. And I guarantee you the other one was put in because one was not passable at some point in the past. And so um, it is on the, the western side of the borough property. Um, and the road that goes straight down to the pavilion there and then back to Brent Keith's property is a public access road. Um, it does access private property. So there's not really any pro, public or private um roads in this vicinity. Um, but yeah, it's just something that I think that it was, it was meant to do at the end of last year and then beginning of this year. And then it hasn't happened because it's been the only viable access. And so I'm just asking to reconsider the decision made to block it um by Black Diamond, just for safety sake, so.
Would it be possible to do another access to Dry Creek where, where the road curves there, like back up a little bit? Yeah, right there?
Possibly, yeah. I mean, it's, it's possible, but.
Because then you'd have two.
Yeah, um, I, I guess there would be, there had to be a real strong reason to put another trail in um when there's two already there. Viable trails. I don't like just putting in trails for no reason, but if there's a good reason, sure. You know, if it was private or unsafe, um, I don't know what the, the ledge looks like. That whole corner of Dry Creek is pretty bad. And that's um when you go down just a little bit further, that's when it starts flooding into um Ranch Road and Killian Road area. Um, so it may be pretty high right there. So I mean, it can be done, I'm sure.
I'm ju, I'm wondering if, if it might be a good idea to have a powell with all of the interested parties
Yeah.
in that area and get some, get some collective ideas um so that, you know, because we're hearing from you and we heard from Black Diamond before and it'd be good to get everybody in the same room to talk about um the potential.
Concerns and, and the reason they wanted to block it, I think when I was watching the meeting was people coming from Dry Creek on that trail, if they continue straight and do not make that left, um, they continue down to the private property, but there's no sign or anything like that at that T, the kind of that T right there. Um, that shows that they're, I mean, they're not entering private property, but there's no access, there's no, or um, no outlet or anything like that. So I think that's kind of one of the reasons they wanted to block it because people and it would, it's more um people that come that are um either locals or come and rent an ATV or go hunting in this area. It's not our tours, it's not their tours. It's not anybody who knows the trail system. Anybody who knows the trail system is not gonna go back there, just can't even turn around back there, really. Um, so it's more of just anybody coming off of Dry Creek is, is gone straight into their uh pavilion area or Brent Keith's uh access. And then has caused, has to turn around down there. So that's kind of, I think, one of the main driving forces to wanting to block that is that people don't continue on down that road instead of turning left when they're coming out of Dry Creek.
And I do remember the owners um on the other side were also um in favor. I think they came to the meeting as well. The Govins.
They were in favor because of the noise, I believe, of the ATVs, but
So it's closer to there.
The other road access is only a hundred yards away and guaranteed the noise is not much different a hundred yards away with ATVs. But I can look into seeing where a trail can be possible if you'd like and if you know where.
That would be great. And then we could, um, I wonder, is it, would it be a good idea to have a work session with all of the interested parties? Can we do that? Can we? Like invite them, respect, yeah.
Yeah, I think we should put it on the next meeting and yeah.
Let's, yeah, let's do. Work session and, and invite all of the interested parties out there and see if we can come up with some ideas of how to make, make it safer and more enjoyable for everybody.
That's not gonna be.
August. Yeah, that was.
We do our best to maintain and use that first one because that's just, we try to but there are some times that that access is very, very limited and unsafe.
Um, can, can water be managed better somehow? No. You would do it if you could.
Not without a lot of goes or work.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, you can, you can spend thousands of dollars and days out there moving dirt around and then one flood, it's.
It goes back, yeah.
It doesn't matter, unfortunately.
It's like what's going on in Yellowstone right now.
Oh my gosh, yeah. Yeah. You could probably invite, create a work session, but some of them might not be able to make it until end of season because like Black Diamond and Denali TV's, it's a busy season. And if we don't meet until August, you're only one more month before closing.
Well, I can also talk to Joe and see what's going on if they're planning on blocking it because they haven't done it yet. I mean, I, I know they haven't done it either because they're too busy or that, that's their access as well right now. So it kind of prohibits them from entering Dry Creek. Which they don't want. So I can, you know, meet with him, but because it was formally approved, um even if I talk to him about it, it doesn't mean that it can't be blocked.
Yeah.
I guess the decision would be for if you guys wanna try to find a way, if you want to hold off on the blocking it for at least this season.
Think anybody has manpower to do anything like that anyways right now.
To block it, yeah.
Yeah.
And who had gotten the approval to do that?
Black Diamond.
Black Diamond was gonna take on responsibility of cutting their new trail to overlook the creek and then to do the blocking and uh like every other business in the world right now, they don't have enough people to do the things they really need to do.
And if they're currently having to use it, they're not gonna block it.
And then we can do the work session in August like you said.
Yeah. Yeah, let's plan a work session in August and try to invite the interested parties. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
All right. So we were talking about Pangini.
Well, I think we're at the point where we're gonna basically rack and stack, right? We can't talk about three of them to move forward on unless anybody else had one, burning a hole to add to the list and then prioritize it maybe. Of what we want to move on on next.
Dare I ask if there's been any movement on Pangini bee survey?
Still the process, still working on it. Knee surgery kind of got in the way.
I don't know why. All you gotta do is send a computer and do it work.
Low was on survey. What's with all the survey crews now? You got stuff set up down there south of Blue Church for several days, set up in front of Fishers.
Totem, they had.
Totem, they're down in the subdivision over here.
Stuff for the fiber, fiber runouts.
They've already got the fibers to run all the way down Dry Creek. So why would they be out here redoing this again?
Currently the only project, yeah, I know of would be MTA. They're working on a um putting some new fiber. I don't know if they need to, they got a contract to do even newer fiber than what they've done in the last couple of years in the subdivision.
I think they're talking about running the fiber out to the houses now.
Yes, yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. And survey crews were coming down Healy Spur Road um for the design of the Healy Spur reconstruction. Saw that the other day. So uh, I guess the priorities, right? Which ones do we want to? Rack and stack one, two, three possible?
Yeah, let's talk about one, two, three.
So we're saying in the running is Yanard and Pangini Brown Short or, or you, the Healy.
Wait a minute, Healy, yeah, like Yanard.
Healy Pangini.
Healy connecting to Pangini, that ridge that.
Yeah, yeah, that Healy sub one and then uh, yeah, connecting Penguin, just like you said. So I guess it's a two slash.
Healy and Pangini are kind of the same area for all of us. It's just how it was broken down.
Right.
So.
I mean.
Okay, so if we go with those three areas, the next step is what?
Surveying.
Maybe actually have to do public engagement to find out because um I think this process of wanting to put a subdivision out there, you also have to think bigger picture of what else would you need in the area to go with your subdivision? So are you wanting to create like green spaces around the subdivision? Or are you wanting to also have like any other types of categories? So commercial or industrial leasing areas, um, you know, what could be kind of in the area? And then you want to decide um some of the other stuff about um kind of doing like the walkability or connecting them. So how do you want to connect your things together? That's how you want to plan out some trails or something in the area, find the recreation area. So kind of, I think in your process, you will find out um you most likely go out there, you'd have to do like a public engagement and then people are gonna tell you, hey, you know, this should be saved for recreation or this should be saved or we need a trail to connect this area to this area and, and then break it down into like a good subdivision would be here. Um, you would have to also go out in some of these areas or do a little more research to find out if you know, we may pick an area for a subdivision, but it may not be terrain appropriate um kind of thing. And keep in mind both of So the Healy and the Pangini Bee have, you know, residential is one of the multiple uses um for each of those areas to, to consider. As Marsha was saying, you know, what else, what else is incorporated in um a more detailed plan of, of those parcels? And then, yeah, figuring out, I guess, some things would be figuring out your access point to these, um, you know, to these areas. If you're wanting to keep them more on Stampede, do you want to design like a frontage road if it was like next to the highway so you don't have driveways coming off of the highway? But put a frontage road kind of along the highway that could connect that's below the ridge, kind of between the ridge line and the highway where you could set it up for a leasing area. So commercial, it could be a commercial area um for leases.
That sounds like my Wassilification to me.
And that gets into it as you look at it and there's some stuff. So if you don't like, you know, so if you do put industrial or some commercial along the highway, you can also put like a barrier, a buffer of vegetation. So you wouldn't actually see it.
Right.
But it could be, I mean, currently that's the kind of between, you know, on the west side of the highway, that's kind of limited space which you could use. Um, we don't really want to sell it in case you did get kind of a big structure that popped up there. Kind of thing. But I think it's a bigger picture of your planning effort. You'd start out with, hey, we want a subdivision and then open it up to more of what else would you want in the area? And if we kind of got it set up, you know, more in-depth planning effort, then we'd have lease areas. So if somebody came in and they're like, hey, we want a lease, we want to put a building, we're like, well, this has been classified for a potential lease of, you know, some sort, like some big box store, smaller business, mom and pop kind of shop. That we'd have stuff ready that we could just start getting revenue, stuff to sell, stuff to lease. Um, you know, just recently I was approached by a group that wants to put in a rec center. You know, and so they've been searching around and that's another thing for us to kind of plan out too. Um, it will come through our um commercial use permit too, you know, something kind of like that, but we can set aside land for different things because we do know we need material sites. Same kind of areas we're gonna have subdivisions because they're gonna need maintenance to roads. So that's something to keep in. We do want recreational areas and that kind of stuff. So and if you want more mixed use of a subdivision that might have potential that a lot could be turned into a commercial or a little, little store, like a local convenience store or something, um, or some other kind of little shop. Yeah, we can set it aside, like a subdivision can kind of have that stuff too. In simultaneously is the Trails Not to Recreation Planning Committee with RTC is going to start working on a inventory of existing social trails. Um, and how they tie in, connect, branch off from communities in different areas of the borough. You know, as a hopefully a helpful, helpful process and step as, you know, how it might tie into a subdivision as well. You know, there are, you know, not insignificant social trails everywhere, but you know, definitely in Pangini Bee um in the winter especially, so.
Yeah. So do we kind of have to go at it all at once, that parcel and think about all the uses that we will want? Like you can't just go into one little spot and say, we'll do this here without thinking, like you're saying, without thinking about.
For me, the, it's, I think it's easier to do planning because if you just pop a subdivision out there, it's gonna be hard to plan for a material site because all of a sudden now if you have a subdivision right in the middle of your parcel and the best place right next to it is a material site, people are gonna be a little upset. So I think it's better to kind of maybe you know, get some areas where subdivision might be good, but then you're gonna have to look at some of the other things that people might want in the area. Like a material site is definitely one of them. Um, you know, there are, there's also the social trails and everything because like Pangini does have a lot of trails that we'd have to take into account what trails are kind of already in the area and maybe plan with that. Um, because yeah, if the best place to put one of our subdivisions is right in the middle where everybody's using trails, um, it's not gonna go overwhelm the public. So you kind of, you kind of have to look around at just a few things. If you are wanting to have some lots out there that could be more disruptive or unfavorable by residential areas. Um, then you kind of do kind of want to look a little bit. I think I've kind of foresawed that that would help you kind of plan like a subdivision would be good here, but over in this area would be better for something that's more of a commercial or industrial use. So you have your buffers. Um, you don't have to specifically probably plan out what the commercial industrial, but maybe look in an area and be like, oh, subdivision's good here, maybe commercial or industrial um might be a good over here because you have enough of a buffer, you know, the recreation might be kind of good in this area. Kind of thing.
Oh, I think it's important to set aside areas for parks, future, at least elementary schools, uh, stuff like that. Uh, you know, if you get several miles from an existing community center, you might want to consider leaving space for a future community center. Stuff, you know, that uh, the state has been very negligent about uh, adding to their subdivisions. But we don't have to be.
Parks Highway and something that I'm working to educate myself on more is the National Scenic Byways Plant Master Plan. You know, the Parks Highway is in this and so um there are already certain identified waysides that are eligible for projects through the master plan. But um, you know, we're in communications with state parks with Antler Ridge going in and how can this get tied in? How can we wrap this into the National Scenic Byway Program that has a, even a separate federal grant that's designated for it? Um, and if there's anything.
Um, and if there's anything scenic or green space along the highway, um, you know, both Pangini B and Healy. Tying into the the scenic highway, um, it's, it's just another layer um, to consider. Um, both for planning but also funding, um, you know, what what might be an advantage of of being along the highway.
So and the state also has a non-use zone along the river too. I think it's about a half mile no use zone along the river on each side.
Wow, I didn't know that.
Yeah. Uh, and and you see in section thirty-six of in the Yanard area. That uh, we only have, the borough only has a couple little pieces of very frozen wetland. And the reason is almost all of that is within that low use zone.
So. I think that leads us to spending more time thinking about the future of these couple of high priority areas. Set maybe in, is that another work session? Come back after spending some time, yeah, maybe?
What would we need to do for a public meeting? Because I feel like we need more prep before we do a public meeting.
I think, well, years ago, we did do kind of a little work session and I think majority of you worked on. The uh, the plant commission at that time, where we did kind of, we brought up a map of like Pangini area and. Um, some of the people just kinda drew on it and it was an work session that invited some people and Susan might have remembered it and Baxter might have. But they just kinda drew a few little things of like, oh, well, this might be good for res- um, residential and this one might be good for leasing and it was just a general thing, so. Um, and that one was kind of a good just start of, people can kinda see what you're thinking and then they can come in and be like, hey, you know what? This residential area isn't so good, because it's right in the middle of a swamp or a pond or whatever. Um, it's just more, I guess, to involve, do public meetings is more to get public input and kind of help and guidance and stuff, because. You know, it's the people in the area that are gonna let us know, hey, there's an actual trail right here, oh, this is really, you know, swampy land. Uh, this one might be good for a subdivision, cause it's mainly gravel kinda stuff, um, and I think it's more information, so maybe the first meeting might be. Uh, what you might wanna share, what your thoughts might be of what you're kinda trying to do in the area. Um, and I guess how in-depth you might wanna have that detail and then get some information. Um, I found it's a little easier to kinda bring just the template of kinda what you're thinking and then they can tell you, it's easier for them to say yes or no, whether they like it. Then you just open it up and be like, hey, we wanna have a subdivision, will you let us know? People are a little more apt to be like, hey, they don't like what you're thinking.
Yeah.
And get more public input than if you just open it up and be like, hey, we're thinking of a subdivision in this area, give us your comments.
Yeah, that was a pretty effective way of getting local participation.
Yes.
Given that a lot of the year, we can't actually see some of this area, it might be good to schedule another couple of nights of work session. Where we physically go to the locations and march around more with this more in-depth planning.
Yeah.
Uh, the other idea would be to um, try to get maybe some drone footage of the areas that we're looking at. Um, places that are harder to access um, right now and um, or on foot, like. We're, we're all active, but some of us are more active than us.
We have limited time.
To see a little bit more of the area that's harder to get to with current access. Um, and summertime might be summer, August, September might be a really good time to do those things. And um, focus on maybe the public meetings when it's less easy to get to those.
Yeah, e- even even up, early October is a good time, because the businesses and everything have closed down. But people may still be around and have a little time to participate.
We think, oh, our community mapping is done, yeah, we got some really good community maps. Yeah, that'd be useful for this effort and um, so yeah, I was seeing this session as the broad view, right? We're looking at all of the borough lands, the whole, the whole uh, list of management areas, management plans in front of you this evening. And the spreadsheet of all the different borough lands, which ones are classified as potential residential and then honing in. At the next meeting, whether it be three or maybe fewer, and because I, there is gonna be, like Marsha said, a more detailed. You know, planning process that that um, that I think honing in on, you know, even one of these areas. And there's been some work on, uh, if you, if you choose that Pangini area, um. You know, there's been work on that before, honestly, you know, Will Forsberg, who sadly passed away a few days ago. Put together, it was a rough sketch, but a pretty darn good plan for um, the next kinda subdivision. Kind of phases within that area and you know, we can bring some of those kinds of things forward if if we hone in on an area for the next session.
Sounds good.
Yep.
We also have to hone in on, on the idea and what it is we're trying to accomplish, I mean, we're trying to create like another community with the industrial businesses and schools and things. Are we just trying to get, you know, fifteen or twenty or thirty lots available to the public to build a home? I mean, most of us moved here thirty, forty years ago, we had an opportunity to acquire private land and build our own homes. And that opportunity hasn't existed for the younger people, our kids and everyone else's kids, to do that, the private land just hasn't been available. Um, in the quality that people are looking for to build on, you know, so I think. Just as dealing with a lot of businesses, you know, people always ask, well, where would we live or, you know, it's like. Is there land available? We'd like to build a home, it's like, we're trying to get some land, it's like, well, good question, a lot of us have that question. So, I mean, so we have to hone in on what we want, what we're trying to achieve right now, short term. And then, you know, fit that into something long-term, but I don't know if we necessarily need to plan immediately for that long-term. You know, I like the ridge line that we're discussing, that that's gonna be the site, but that would probably strictly be a residential area. We're not gonna put anything commercial or industrial or anything like that up there, you know, so do we just wanna make lots available to the public to build homes? Or we're trying to build another little community?
So probably setting up the next work session to hone in on one of them, like you said, they laid it out, you know, there's a lot to consider.
Or even like just subdivision planning, you know, gets into it, do you wanna make like a, it's just gonna be getting public input, hey, do you want a thirty lot subdivision here? Where they're all like one acre or two acre lots, um, you know, there's been some people are like, hey, we'd like, you know, three to four acre lots or something. And that gives them a little, you know, and that's just planning wise and that gives people some buffer and having to be on a one acre lot, if they could have something that's a little closer to three. They have a little more buffer from their neighbors, um, kinda thing. Um, and just getting, yeah, just getting subdivision input is how we wanna design it, it's cause some people may be like, hey, we only want like five lots. Not a thirty lots of the vision right there. Um, and then just designing the roads and you have to design it, you know, future-wise of, you know, maybe you phase it out, maybe you start with just ten lots. But this has potential to expand to be, you know, one day, but you have to design the roads in them too to accommodate. Cause if we have only one road that's gonna get you onto the ridge line and that's probably gonna be our main road to get you to everything that's gonna be west of that ridge line. Um, then yeah, you're gonna wanna design that as a pretty major road, cause that will be your, your access point to everything that's pretty much on the ridge line. And west of it and going south and stuff. And then I think we talked, you know, for a while in past, if, you know, we do wanna get some parcels out in people's hands and we've talked on back and forth of. You know, how do we actually get it to people who are wanting to build? Um, cause yeah, we wanna get in people's hands, but you might get a, you know, several locals or people that I've found people walk off the bus and wanna buy a parcel. Well, they'll buy it, they'll never build on it and then we're kind of in the same boat we're in now, where we have a lot of undeveloped land and gone back and forth of. You know, the covenants or type of deed restrictions, which gets into, if we're not gonna enforce them, then why do we put them on there?
I think some of the Pangini lots were, you had to prove up on it within a certain amount of time and we could put something like that in there. One lot per family to success, you can bid on multiple, but you know, it can only get once, that's not keeping it, you know, don't let somebody get control of the. Multiple lots. I think there's ways of not know that.
And there is, and that's just one thing that we have to take in consideration, how do we get it to people who are gonna build? I've seen in a lot of, you know, cities and towns that they also have, you have two years to build something on it, if you don't, then it reverts back to the borough, goes back up the cell again. I mean, I think that's kind of what, you know, I know DNR does with agricultural land. You know, you have, within the first two years, you gotta clear so much of it, you gotta start doing something, or else it goes back to them to go to the next person who wants to actually use it.
So if we go to subdivisions here, say we went Pangini or Dry Creek, or and we're talking about this, putting the whole ridge line, most of them up there. Or is a borough planning on putting in access roads and electricity also? You sell, you line up twenty lots up there and you sell three here, two here and the other guys could have a PM down here. You sure we're not gonna, I mean, we discussed about what the state does such a poor job of letting stuff go. And the good ones and most of them have been, and where the roads have been basically put in and power. So we went, we're discussing about putting all these covenants and presidential and when you have a dog team here, or whatever else you got and all the limitations here. Are we gonna try and do this the best way and put in roads and power or?
That you have to put in the road if you have so many lots, right?
The days of getting money from the state to build the road are over.
Right, but I mean, I'm using lignite subdivision for an example, when they, in that, my opinion, they did it the right way. They designed the roads, basically, and they put in power to where you, everybody's got, you didn't get a meter group, but you were within the distance or you could be within the. If you decide you don't wanna build it on this half the lot, you wanna put up here, you gotta put another pole and that's your problem, but you don't have to build any full mile or half mile electricity to get there. And no way getting around it, everybody, basically, every, I don't know anybody around here that doesn't like electricity. But no, there's something else to be, I realize it'd be pretty hard to do in Yanard, now that might be a little stretching.
Yeah.
So one, one thing that you guys haven't mentioned that should be part of every subdivision is a homeowners association.
I agree.
You know, that solves a lot of the problems that we've been talking about.
Recent cases, it causes the problem people are talking about.
Who's gonna plow it?
Yeah, but I think. Establish should have to be part of it, because there's no other mechanism for people to unite to take care of roads.
Well, there is, I mean.
Donations.
We did a. Layer of gravel on Arcris Avenue last summer, just by getting together and doing it.
On a road to, to join together, do that, I, I don't have as much success on, on regulars each year.
So, but it, it gives a mechanism for asking for state funds, borough funds.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, as an nonprofit.
Which one are we gonna move out on then, I guess?
Um, I. I think we should visit the prop, the places again in September. What do you think? Talk, I mean, if we visit um. Pangini and the Healy area, can we also visit the, the front part of the Yanard? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in, and access into the area that you are look at is not readily available.
Oh, that patented area isn't?
Nope. Yeah, you, it's not easy to get.
Okay. Well, let's focus on Pangini and Healy. At least for the visit in September, is that something?
I think in August, we could have a work session just up front, a quick, we can jot ideas down in between then and now. Kinda get a layout of what we think is gonna happen and then when we visit, we can be like, oh yeah, that makes sense to have a subdivision here or whatever.
I think I'd like to spend some time looking at these uh, between us and brainstorm before going to public meetings and.
Yeah.
So if you, if you put a look at the uh, Yanard area. Uh, late November, December is a good time, the snow cover is not deep, but it's still accessible with snow machine. And really, that's the most accessible way you're gonna see it.
It does sound fun.
Also, when the time comes, I think it, as a client commission, that we would identify. A big plan and that we bring in a professional at that point. Uh, like, I don't know if that company we hired to help us get through uh, chapter four does subdivision type stuff. But some professional people to take it the final distance.
Yeah, they're less of an engineering firm and I'd like to hire somebody who both does planning and engineering.
That would be appropriate. We identify, uh, we identify a spot and we identify kind of what we want.
And when you do that, he expects to spend a lot of money.
Yeah, we. I think.
Do it right.
Yeah, I think that's what we wanna do is do it right.
So August work session to look at aerial that we have already, right, we can start with that. Awesome. And then aim for the September, October hike out. With the aerial like ideas that we pen and paper up to the, to the walk that makes sense and then we move on November on. The next phase.
Yeah.
I'll bring my best grants.
And it will be interesting to kind of figure, to try and hit that price point target, cause it will be expensive to do this engineering. And how many lots and at what price do you recoup?
Right.
Those costs, you know, will be something we'll be considering along the way.
If all of a sudden it looks like it's gonna be thirty grand an acre, then we just abandon it, cause people aren't gonna pay that. Residential lots and then I don't think anyone's paying that around here.
Before you put in the driveway and.
What's that?
No, just out in the village.
What is land going for?
Last asking price in the lignite area I'm aware of, none of them have sold, it was like seventeen five an acre.
With road and power.
I know a couple of uh, lots in Pangini.
Um, did sell for closer to twenty. Um, on Arcris for an acre.
And, and I just threw thirty out, there's a wild number, I mean, just like, but that is a consideration. But, yeah, we need to know what, what the investment's gonna be and what the return would be.
You're, you're giving me a hundred acres and I'll sell it down here and I'll sell it for thirty thousand an acre within a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With road and power.
Without roads or power or anything.
What I think you have to consider, I don't think if that's what it costs to develop it, that's what it's gonna cost to develop it and it's probably not gonna get any cheaper the longer you wait. Um, but you would have to, and you probably, it's not gonna be by a lot of money making, cause you do have to, we hire the engineer to help us just go out there and be able to design the subdivision too. Cause they'll know a little more um, of how to avoid some like wetland areas, we're not selling a lot that takes a lot of special requirements, you can't build on it. And then, yeah, to recoup the road and the power being brought in, in the long term, us building the road to a proper standard. And then having the homeowners association take it over is kind of more beneficial to us than allowing them to build it themselves. Cause it's not gonna be built to the highest standard and to the best where it would last, where, you know, it would just need a little bit of maintenance every year if they, you know, were able to just maintain it. Um, kinda thing, so. I mean, we may not be able to fully recoup the engineering costs and all of it, but it had all the stuff in there and it would sell probably quickly. Cause I know I could sell, I could have probably sold all the lots in Pangini Creek subdivision if they had the roads built in there. The last few lots we have, they're not selling, because it's like two miles worth of road and it is kinda wetland, it's tundra, squishy stuff that people don't even wanna build a dry cabin out there. And that's usually what I get people, they're like, I. And that's usually what I get people, they're like, I wanna dry cabin. I'm like, go look at it. They never come back.
Yeah. Yeah, that's pretty wet.
We'll get an indication of, uh, something we consider also in another month or so when Golden Valley makes their decision on unit one. They'll have a, a very positive or a very negative impact.
We have a plan, right? So. August, we're working, we're walking out.
August, we were gonna review the aerials first.
August, yes.
Whatever paper documents, the drawings you mentioned.
Community maps, soil surveys.
Okay, so August, we're sitting here again. September, we're walking out.
And you could just, like, in August, you might go pinpoint some areas you might wanna focus on, on your walk. Because, you know, some areas are pretty big, so even to just, you know, look at some of the land just north of Stampede. I mean, that's two miles worth of just walking to get to the north of it. So if there's some areas you wanna pinpoint and kind of look at general, but then actually have more focused areas, that would be good. And yeah, you can take into all account documents we can find in the area.
Yeah, okay. We're gonna next month, so next month, we're gonna do, um, Pangini and Healy, and talk about Yanar.
Starting from where?
I think going.
From Dry Creek.
Yeah, I guess, I guess Yanar's in the mix as well.
Well, once, we, we already have soil surveys by Bonhof in the added area, which I will get to the borough so I can be given to all you guys.
Yeah, I think it'll be helpful though.
And, and the US survey numbers for those sections. Stuff like that, so.
Yeah, if you can get that to the borough, that would be good.
I mean, I live here, I'm not real excited about a lot of people either, but, you know. This is an area that needs more private land.
Yeah, and I didn't bring it up earlier, it was just on my mind. I like Mark's idea of, you know, not attached to any other subdivision, but just a road in itself, an area in itself. And it doesn't have other kind of, um, issues with it. If, if we do pursue that Yanar area, um, a question that will come up is the road that is not built currently for a high volume of traffic.
Yeah.
Does the, and the easement's not really big enough to do much more with it, is it?
Um, Steve probably knows more about that, um, kind of built the road, um, but, um, there is a hillside on, you know, one side and the other, and just know that that will be a, a concern that will be brought up, because that would be the, the need would be to use that road to access that area.
So the concern is gonna be the increased traffic that increasing the private land in the area will cause. You know, cause we don't have a lot of we don't have a lot of traffic, and if we do another subdivision in the area. It will, for most of the area will cause a bunch of traffic, much, much more traffic. Not just local traffic, but people going out there for hunting and stuff too. Yeah, I, you know, from talking to, that's probably one of their biggest concerns.
Okay. Cool. Good. We could move on to the regular meet. All right.
I have seven forty-five.
Wow, seven forty-five, I'm calling the meeting to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Here.
Steve Jones. Susan Brown.
Here.
Extra Mercer.
Here.
James Ward.
Here.
Mark Minkie.
Here.
Here.
How long's that been?
We don't have any public comments?
Just, just the one from Mr. Davis so far and nothing else.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I moved to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Oh, wait, no, sorry, discussion? Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor? Agenda is approved and set. All right, so we have two minutes, um, of previous meetings, October twenty-first of twenty twenty and May eighteenth, the last meeting, twenty twenty, wait. Where's that to say twenty twenty-one? Right, and May eighteenth?
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-two, okay.
We just.
Goodness gracious, all right.
It's twenty twenty-one?
We totally skipped it. We did have a meeting for like four months and just never made it on another.
Yes.
So if they were written, they just never.
That would have been in the midst of COVID.
Yeah.
There was some other things going on.
There was a little bit going on there.
I'll second it.
Um, any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes? Okay, minutes are approved. There any correspondence?
None.
Lots in conditional uses? Reports from May. Here.
Yeah, thank you. Good to be with you this evening. I do have a class on Wednesday night that I bailed out on to be with you tonight. Um, and, you know, and it'll help that we don't have a July meeting. And hopefully, my classes won't be on Wednesdays going forward to. But, um, so, yeah, I do have a written report for you, uh, that was in your packet. Um, pretty much the same report that went to the assembly. I wanna highlight a couple land pieces.
I don't think you got that.
Oh, it wasn't in the paper packet, but on the onboard packet, okay, yeah. Um, well, I'll go through some of the things, and Teresa will be highlighting um, some of, some similar projects as well, but we are excited about, um, great news from USDA Rural Development Grant Program. We did apply um, to help support our businesses here, to find the businesses here for, um, funding to put in street signs and, and addresses. And we, uh, working on that paperwork today, um, we were awarded about ninety-two thousand dollars, um, for a hundred and fourteen thousand dollar project of which the borough will will take that twenty percent match, which is about twenty-two thousand. So, um, we'll be parlaying some borough funds to get a good, um, street sign project going. Um, with the focus of, um, starting with, um, uh, kind of more business attached areas. Um, so that's where the, the money's come from rural, rural development. Update from the redistricting committee, they did have their, um, pretty much final meeting just, uh, last night, and they did um, approve to they approved a resolution that had two districting plans, apportionment plans to go to the assembly. And, um, they did great work, appreciate the, um, the redistricting committee. Appreciate Susan Braun, Commissioner Braun for serving on that committee. We had assembly members on the committee. A planning commissioner, school board member, and a member of the public. And, um, you have, uh, resolution tonight that kind of mirrors, uh, their resolution as they did kind of take the planning commission composition and treat it separately, because it's not an elected body and it doesn't need to meet those apportionment requirements. But we can talk more about that when we get to that resolution. Pretty, I'm just waiting each, each day for, um, the governor to take action on the state budget. Um, whether be to sign it as it is, or to make those vetoes that we expect to see some of. And, um, you know, I've been advocating for keeping in, um, the three point seven million that's in the project currently under the long trail projects for a project that was identified in our Pell, that's the Planning and Environmental Linkage Study. That's one of our community connector trails. Um, it's, it's the trail that would go from Carlo Creek to Krabby's Crossing and then connect with the park side trails. Um, that's currently in the state budget, and it's kind of exciting that, that, um, that, that, um, that paved trail, I might be funded. I just saw a family visiting, uh, a family of visitors, um, yesterday morning. We're walking in that ditch where someday we could have a, a nice trail for them. I think it will really enhance, um, not only uh, the area for residents, but for businesses as well. There's what I've been telling the governor's office.
Would this be, uh, a trail like along, like the highway, within the highway right away?
Within the highway right away, paved bike trail.
Okay.
That pedestrians would be allowed on. I mean, called a bike trail, it's, it's a paved separated path. Yep, it's identified in the Pell. So that's exciting, um, and the Trace is gonna give a great update on Antler Ridge Project. A lot's been happening up there. Thanks to Commissioner James Ward for helping out on National Trails Day. That was a really good day of, um, trail building, which a lot of volunteers and that great MPS Trail Crew, uh, got done together. We, uh, we did a lot of work that day and, and appreciate the team effort, and Teresa's got more on that. And looking for more land related things on the report, um, I think that covers it, and I'll and take any questions you might have. Before we go into Teresa's.
Any questions? Okay, Teresa?
Yeah, of course, Amber.
Can I share my screen? Okay. All right, can folks see this?
It's pretty small.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, so the
Antler Ridge Parking Lot now has a functional trailhead. Uh, on National Trails Day, we had twenty-four volunteers come with eight folks from the Denali Park Trail Crew. Um, the goal, again, to connect the parking lot to the existing social trail. To have a functional trailhead from that parking lot. It, it'll be an unmaintained recreational trail until um, formal design and construction, um, does occur in twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. But for now, you'll see, um, in that top left, the before and after of how you, um, leave the parking lot. Um, the, the top right is that connection, um, immediately following that. In the bottom left, you'll see it, it was just through some pretty significant, um, brushy tundra and Luke Will Miller and his daughter Linnae actually found a great pile of rocks right underneath where they were digging, so built a little bench and um, this is the last stretch that leads up to that social trail from, um, that connects to the ATV trail that leads from the RV motel, so. And then in the bottom right, you'll see that one of the steep scramble sections, the trail crew had additional time, and we went out and worked throughout the next week, um, to reroute around the vertical approach, um, to loop around and, and put a switch back in, so. Some great work was done, um, and it's, and it's looking quite good. Um, a couple of other just short updates, um, COVID vaccination and testings are going to, um, uh, start up again for, uh, as a free service to residents and seasonal workers, um, through the Canyon Clinic. Um, testing is available nine to five, Tuesday to Friday. Again, it is, the funding is focused on providing free testing to local year-round and seasonal community members for visitors and travelers, um, tests can be scheduled and there would be a cost. Um, and vaccination clinics have started up again as well, um, two, eleven AM to four PM Tuesday to Friday, so those free vaccines and boosters can be scheduled at Canyon Clinic. We're working with a student who is a master in public health from UPenn, who's in Denali for the summer working. She'll be undertaking a community needs assessment with support from the Department of Health and Social Services um, and public health nurses to work on data collection and a community resource map to help the borough advocate and identify um, where gaps in our, um, public health are, um, to hopefully open up the door and allow us to, um, solicit, uh, better services here through, um, federal programs. Clay mentioned the USDA Rural Business Development Grant that we awarded, which is quite exciting to get those street signs um, produced and installed. Um, and then just to have on your radar, a couple of statewide planning efforts, um, that are worth noting. There's the Alaska Long Trail. That's being spearheaded by Alaska Trails to connect Seward and Fairbanks. And as Clay mentioned, there is a, um, a three point seven million portion in the state budget currently for one of the community connectors from the Pell. Um, the state is also undertaking the statewide comprehensive outdoor recreation plan, the SCORP. It's due for its five-year update. Um, and public engagement will start in the fall, and we're part of a work group that's working on the Denali Chapter. And then both Fairbanks and the state are working on their five-year update for a comprehensive economic development strategy, which we've connected with both of those groups on. And then we do have our Trails and Outdoor Recreation Planning Committee. Um, we had seventeen people apply for the nine open seats, which was an incredible, um, interest. And so we focused on a group that was geographically dispersed, uh, areas of knowledge dispersed, and also just their, um, position in the community, um, whether a business or a local or a long-time resident. Um, and then we have both representative from DOT, Alaska Trails, and I'm hoping, um, MPS planning to be ex officio offer, officers. Um, so wouldn't be a voting member, but still, uh, participate in the process. Um, and that's what I have for you folks today, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And I'm in the Midwest, so it's very dark here already, so that's why I'm not in a twenty-four hours of daylight currently.
And getting late.
Yeah. Teresa, could you tell me more about the, um, that student, um, in the the, was it a public survey? What is this?
Community needs assessment.
And so she will be identifying what resources exist in the Denali Borough. She'll also be conducting interviews and focus groups with, you know, emergency services. Um, the clinics, um, churches, uh, nonprofits to help the borough understand where gaps are for public health. And where there are disparities and where, you know, we could use more funding. And that will allow us to seek and advocate for that funding, um, having done a community needs assessment. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Teresa? Okay, thank you. Marcia?
Just a quick little update, we hired a consultant, um, Duncan, uh, Tom Duncan with Duncan J S. He's helping me create our J S files. He's getting them into the Nina standard. He, uh, it's gonna take a little bit longer than I thought, cause when he started, uh, building the road layer, re- reviewing what he needed, it's came out to be, he only estimated he'd have to do about three hundred segments of roads, and it came out to be over a thousand. For the requirements that Nina has for how road, how the road layer looks. Um, it's gotta be broken down into a lot of different, uh, things for dispatch to be able to run it and stuff, so. It'd probably still be about three or four months before the, those files are. It probably still be about three or four months before those files are and I'll be working kind of. On the other side of potentially opening up the application process so I can start verifying numbers. But we still won't assign addresses until the rest of the database is built. Because it's not going to do much difference, I believe if if I can't share anything with dispatch. It's just going to be a number that nobody knows about. So the database has to be pretty much built and sent off to the entities that would need it, you know, dispatch, the fire departments. Postal Service, all of them, because if they don't have that, then me assigning you a number is not going to mean anything. Because nobody would be able to compare it to anything. And then I'll be I'll be constructing kind of a just a simple online map where if somebody wants to, they could just look up the address themselves. So it's just gonna be a simple map, I'll have like the road and then an address point. And you can click on the address point and it'll just tell you the number or you can click on the road and it'll tell you like the road name. So something simple that will just be out there so anybody can look at it. I know like a lot of places are used to that. So I've gotten calls from different entities, mortgage companies, banks, you know, just general banks, other even the GPS systems. Have even called to just ask for simple stuff like that.
Okay.
And then I do have kind of just some sample, we're also kind of reviewing what we might want our house number signs that we have you post at the beginning of your driveway. There are some potential colors that we have, kind of like brown one, a green one, a blue and a red. Just kind of deciding they would be reflective signs. So that's just kind of what I've been working on.
Any questions for Marcia?
So you would just have one color, you're gonna pick a color or the person can pick their color?
No, I think right now we're just thinking of picking kind of one color and just having the whole borough have it, so it's a little more uniform.
Yeah.
There was some other talk about maybe each community could kind of pick one, but. It might make it easier since we have multiple kind of cross jurisdiction, so sometimes McKinley Village according to the same as. Tri Valley that if it had one color, people would know what to look like, so if it was like the red sign, people know right away, oh, well, this red number sign. Is associated like our house numbers, you know. Other places, cities and counties and stuff, they kind of do pick some stuff like that and it gets a little uniform and then everybody kind of in that area knows. Oh, if you see this type of sign. That that's what it is.
Yeah.
Okay. Would each resident be responsible for placing these signs?
Yes, currently we have that, so we've talked about that we would provide a sign and then you, the residents would have to post it. And there's a couple options, you know, either putting it on a post right there or you could put it on a tree, but you want to make sure it's very visible in the tree. Clear some branches around it, you know, those would be the options. And then if you wanted to, we don't have it, it's just we're going to provide one sign and if you guys wanted a sign for your house or whatever, you could. Like decide how you want to do do that, because that might be nice for some emergency service people, especially if you have like a lot of structures. I mean, if you know, if your garage looks like your house. Kind of thing to get it, especially if you live on like a big parcel of land. You know, like Baxter does, that it might be easier to find the house if if it's spread out like.
Roads are really easy to find, they only go to one spot.
Yeah. And then yeah, and there's the thing is you don't have to take our sign, we we've never really, you know, we kind of talked about that, we're not requiring people to post a sign. It is very encouraged.
Yeah.
And if, you know, Eric had mentioned way back when that, you know, if people on the highway wanted to do something a little more decorative. There is a possibility you could, we might just have a requirement that, you know, the numbers need to be at least three inches big. And preferably if you can make them reflective too, you could make your own sign.
Is the having a house number still? Something each resident would request? Are you are you going to go around and assign one to every known? Location?
Currently, it's just application, so if you turn it in, if you want one, if, I mean, if you don't want one, you don't have to apply for it. I I'm assuming eventually the world's going to make you have to apply for one. Because yeah, if you don't apply for one, I don't assign one, I cannot recognize whatever address you're currently using. And that's what I've been telling people, so I mean, I'm not forcing you to change it, but eventually. Like your mortgage company or somebody calls and they're like, hey, can you verify this? I'll have to tell them, no, I can't, it's not assigned by us, it's not recognized.
Any other questions for Marcia? Thank you. Baxter, you went to the assembly.
Yeah, but I thought I was supposed to report to something we did. It was a very low key meeting, there was only two members of the public that weren't involved in it and that was tools and myself. And certainly worked out very well, they took a vote on whether to do the resolution to. Put the additional money in the unit one, which passed, a couple people were in, pretty good arguments on both sides. But the majority voted to. Suggest they spend the thirty million dollars over there on that. You don't want to keep it going rather than shutting it down. I understand the forest shrieves was picked as the new emergency coordinator. Also, the borough purchased a older fire truck from the fire department, which is going to go up there and be on site. On the row for hand fill fires. Also has an advantage where it's already in the truck, it's already up there with five hundred gallons of water on it and it works. Scott said wasn't wasn't going to go off the footprint of the landfill, you know, tags, paper, whatever else, you know.
Yeah.
Really get bad. You asked for forgiveness later.
Do they do they have a space to keep it warm through the winter?
I don't know, I did, we did cover the idea that in the winter, in the winter, it's freezing time, you want to make sure you totally drain the tanks, just like we do with everything else here. But I mean, you know, proper most fires in the winter, you're not going to worry about anything.
Right.
Vehicle fires and water from the seas of hose fastening it on there, but yeah, should work.
We're excited to have a working truck up there and I don't believe our plan is to is to use that valuable interior space for that.
Yeah, I didn't think.
Travel during the winter, but yeah, drain it.
I supposed to do what I got, I mean, everybody, it's great. Nice meeting. I was impressed at how many people showed up in Cantwell. And I was surprised that there was no members of the public from Cantwell. But as you see here, we don't have a lot of.
So is is there not something on the assembly agenda that is a report from the planning commission? Because they used to have.
Yes, they asked for a report from the planning commission.
Did you report?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
But we have a reporter on here, which I thought that meant that one of the assembly members was going to come to me. Our immediate report.
Oh, no, they don't. No, so you reported to them though?
Yes.
Okay, alright, good.
Beautiful sight driving down there, except for the highway road construction. The Moody Bridge. Three or four miles of piled cars in McKinley Village to build one more part to the hill. That's a lot bigger project than what I thought, we were talking about a passing lane. A long way down there and then they had some. Guys down here were blocking traffic on Moody Bridge for doing whatever they were doing and there were two guys down there checking stuff off on. Indiana number one had nobody watching them. And they were just had orange vests out there, I think. Bridge cast flips wrong way anyway.
Just in bridge inspections?
Yeah, they were out there. But they're out there looking away, so. It was a beautiful drive, it really was.
The new bridge investment program is being rolled out through the federal funding bill, so I wonder if there's a correlation.
Good.
It was nice to be traveling and we hadn't been down to Cantwell, you know, since COVID hit. So yeah, we're back to traveling and the rotation, we've been to Anderson and now Cantwell. So it was good to be on the road.
Remind me how that works, it's more meetings in Healy, but then you do go.
Yeah, for the twelve months of the year, six meetings are in Healy and two in McKinley and two in Cantwell and two in Anderson.
So every other month you're in Healy.
Uh huh. Alright. No communication and appearance requests? And we don't have any unfinished business and we're on to new business. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Vote to introduce resolution twenty two oh three.
You can vote to approve it. Okay. Alright, discussion on the resolution.
I guess the question, since I missed the last meeting, I didn't see it in the minute minutes previously, but. Where did it spawn from and then what problem are we trying to solve with it, I guess?
First I saw this was the. Agenda for the, which group was that, for the redistricting group? Yeah, that's where I first saw it when Amber sent that email. It hasn't been on our.
We we had a conversation about it. In the last meeting, but we didn't really do anything, it wasn't really any. Part of our business, so.
And it stems from like since the census came out, we had to go and re proportion to make sure we were okay in our assembly seats. And then it's just been talked for several years about like the, you know, the school board had mentioned that they'd like to maybe be bumped down to seven seats. And the same thing might be possible with like the planning commission to go from a nine seat body to a seven seat. It's just been some talk over the years and we're waiting for basically redistricting to happen.
So the redistricting committee weighed in on the planning commission specifically, I thought it would be. Good, you weighed in on the planning commission specifically.
So we're voting to approve this and send it on to the assembly? Should that one sentence at the end say pass and approve by the library of planning commissions to the redistricting committee, since we're not the redistricting committee?
So basically it just allows the first go to a vote and then the assembly then determines after the redistricting. Right? And then they determine how many seats they think we need or we can go to them and say, we think we need.
Well, first this would go to the assembly. In August, they'll consider an ordinance to put it on the ballot, so it's one have to go to the voters first.
Okay.
And basically what this says is that the assem- the assembly could control the size and composition of the assembly. It doesn't have to go to the voters for it to change.
Of the plan.
Right, right now it has to go to the voters.
And do we expect it to need to be changed, that we need the ease of having the assembly do it or? What was wrong with just letting the voters do it before?
Now it has to match the assembly members, right?
It's in charter that it matches the assembly and in the same, you know. Same districts, the same district, same proportion as the assembly. And, you know, we are an anomaly in terms of how many commissioners we ask to serve. Throughout the state. Especially with our low population, our population to go down in the last census and I have a little. Chart of all the nineteen boroughs of Alaska and with nine planning commission seats. Most everybody else has either, you know, four, five, six, seven, seven probably being the most common. The only other borough that has. Well, Kenai has a lot because they do their cities have seat, have planning commission seats. Kenai actually has thirteen, which is definitely an anomaly, but every every other place, I mean, Matsu, Big Matsu and everything they got on going on planning wise. Five planning commissioners.
But there might be a difference too, it's like Matsu, as big as it is, it's only got two or three actual cities where Kenai has like six. And they could be like Fairbanks where like North Star Borough where I believe they have five seats, four or five seats that are borough and then two of them from. Like the cities that are on there that make up theirs.
And I think we, I think when we chose nine, you know, we probably chose it to be just equal with our, you know, other bodies, right? And often we did match Fairbanks when we originated our charter, Fairbanks does have nine, yeah, on their planning commission. And they have ninety seven thousand people. We have, you know, sixteen hundred, so we're definitely an anomaly that way and we're asking a lot of our of our people in terms of services. A point that I've been making and, you know, another point is that we've had a hard time to fill all nine seats, as you know.
I guess one one thing I'd point out is again, right now you're currently tied to the same apportionment rules that the assembly is. And and that's a little bit limiting. Additionally, you the assembly could still determine that the planning commission has districts. But your districts won't have to follow those census blocks that were such a challenge to form that district. We could, we could pick more of what's kind of the the social community blocks, you know. It doesn't have to fall into a certain amount of population and so it just would provide a lot more. It doesn't mean you you aren't going to have districts and it doesn't mean that you didn't have to change from nine, it just means that the assembly would have the flexibility to not follow. The same apportionment rules that they do for the commission.
And we can. Pass a resolution to the assembly to. Offer suggestions about how they want to do that, if they.
Right. I think having nine is is good, I think the different voices are good, but I also like the at large idea because we have had vacant seats from the north and the south. Quite some time and. But like you said, we can make a recommendation from the existing commissioners, this is what we feel is a good number.
Any other comments? Yes.
And it's just, you know, to keep in consideration, although you represent, you know, you're representing your district, you also do planning at large. So you're doing the whole borough, so it's not just centric, so it is good to get out and, you know, even if you, if we did go down to just kind of an at large thing. You still need them get involved with other areas because you do plan at large, basically.
You and as a planning commissioner, whatever we're doing, basically everything we do here is borough wide. The signs, parks, everything else, and we can get a little bit. Assembly might be a little bit more. Next areas not quite so common, I mean, there's some effects Cantwell, there's something that's clear that basically doesn't, I mean, overall, for the most part, doesn't really affect us. And it certainly doesn't affect Kimmy Village. So I mean, but for the most part, planning commission already basically. We're dealing on borough wide almost every topic, I mean, the land plant, you know, planning commissioners, signs, the, we've been talking subdivisions. Talking last few weeks, everything, most everything from the north to the south, you know. Now I realize assembly, yes, they do the budget, everything else, but there is a little, there are segments in there that are much more common to them to be working on one part. It's, you know, you know, we are, at large is not bad.
No, I. We, the. Conditional use permits. Relatively new, I don't know that we've reviewed that many of them, but some of those. Some of those have the pension will be ultra specific to one of those areas. I don't think excludes us from at large membership, being able to bring in members of the public or just having people. Who can talk specifically to those areas, but.
Do we see it changing? I I get the two seats not being filled, but I mean, do we see it changing where we would need to. Contract it or expand it at some point? Meaning why, why give the ease? I I guess I just don't see the ease for the necessity of the ease for the assembly to just pass the ordinance, is a okay go.
I think it gives them more flexibility because if it's not tied to it, they could break the planning commission down to, you know, even less seats. And then if, I've always thought, even if you went down to like five seats, if you were to create more ad hoc committees, which are specific for different planning efforts, like, you know, we have the redistricting committee and now we have a trails committee going on, then you could break it into even more where you wouldn't need like such a big body to try to cover it all. You could do less and this gives the assembly the flexibility that, you know what? If you come back and you're like, hey, you know, we need more seats, they can just change it right away. They can add it or subtract members as needed. Because yeah, historically for me being here, my first couple of years here, I think we had three seats, four seats empty, which means like when you get down to a nine body, you're required to have five. Well, that meant everybody had to attend a meeting because four people were gone. That means like, yeah, even, you know, currently we've had our, one of our Anderson seats has been empty for over two years.
We have had several meetings where I know you're kind of canvassing the commissioners. Will you be able to attend to make a quorum? You know, so the higher the number, the more people have to be there, you know, so.
And that's why similar meetings in the last few years, you might have noticed, we cancel a meeting for the month as well. We might not have a quorum or we don't know the topic. So yeah, it does get to there because otherwise it just turns into a work session. We've had a couple of meetings that turned into just work sessions because we didn't get a quorum.
Yeah.
And since you guys only meet once a month, some of these topics, you know, you have to be pushed over to the next month if there was a gap.
We're ready for a vote?
Should we make an amendment for this last line that you pointed out?
I, that's just a typo. I think that gets covered under, is that correct? Yeah.
But you can amend it however you want if you wanted to.
If you just want practice on parliamentary procedure.
The typo, I'm good.
Yeah. Ready for a vote? Okay. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mark Miki?
Yes.
Baxter Mercer?
Yes.
Steve Jones?
Yes.
James Moore?
Yes.
Eric Hoken?
Sorry, I'm gonna say no.
Susan Braun?
Yes.
Keston Tatch?
Yes.
It passes.
I said no.
Alright, public comments still on? Commissioner Collins. Mark, you wanna start?
It was nice to have everybody present again and a good meeting, good work session. I think I stayed, well, I don't know how many years ago, factoring I started about the same time, but creating a subdivision was like foremost in my mind when I first got on, taking those steps. It's good to do that.
Susan? Um, I don't really have any comments.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say the same thing where everybody seems to want a place to build a home for themselves or for their family and it'd be great to be able to help do that.
Someone losing power?
I think we lost Steve.
Yeah, okay, Eric?
Plod the staff for further in the effort on the planning thing. I think we need to move on and kind of like what James said. I get a lot of questions about, probably, you know, like the coffee clutches that clear or whatever, but a lot of people, and when we talked about previous meetings and the ridge comes up a lot because I said, oh yeah, we took a tour up there and all this. Anyways, there's a lot of people asking. So I, I think you guys putting it on the agenda to move it forward and your guidance. I, I like where we're going with August and September and October coming up and, and putting some smarts to it to do it.
Good meeting. Glad to see everybody moving in the right direction.
Yeah, I appreciate seeing everybody too. It's really, really good to see people and I, I enjoy working, doing the work session and doing this planning stuff, so I'm here. Okay, Commissioner, report to the assembly in August. August tenth.
Where's the meeting?
Here in Healy.
Healy.
Hmm, I guess I could do that.
Could you?
I think. As far as I know.
Alright, Susan, thank you. Okay, and our next meeting will be August seventeenth at six PM, starting with a work session. And meeting is adjourned. August seventeenth. I will be back.